...of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have Russ on the phone, but otherwise, I appreciate you signing in.
Three members present in the chambers and one on the phone.
Okay, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
Not a change to the agenda per se, but there was an amendment to item 4G, which was setting a hearing for the amendment to the historic West Des Moines Urban Renewal Plan. The proceedings and notice had to be corrected because the December 2nd hearing date, we won't be located in the council chambers, so it's reflecting the West Des Moines Schools' LRC as the public hearing location. And you have the revised copy on the dais.
Okay. With that, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Or yes.
All right, item two, Citizens Forum, which is time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on any item that's not part of public hearings or new business. We'd appreciate if you'd try to limit your comments to no more than five minutes. And if, I understand there's a number of residents from Ninth Street here, so happy to, happy to hear your concerns, but please try not to repeat comments that have been made by anyone else, so.
I'll go first, and then I won't repeat anyone.
Yeah, so if you'll share your name and your address with us, we'll appreciate it.
Of course. Hello, my name is Erin Sears. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm a resident of Des Moines. I live at 1115 27th Street. However, I'm here tonight because on June 1st, 2019, I was viciously attacked while on my mother, Carla Sears', property at 528 Ninth Street by a pit bull belonging to Carrie and Marty Meisner residing next door at 532 Ninth Street, all in West Des Moines, in fact, Valley Junction. The attack occurred just before 6:00 PM when I was carrying an empty car seat down my mother's driveway. Carrie Meisner was sitting in her driveway, and just as I crossed the short privacy fence separating the two properties, Marty Meisner opened the side door of his home and unleashed their pit bull tail. The dog charged me, pinning me against the side of my mother's house while its jaws clamped down on my left elbow. I visit my mother frequently and also lived in her home for two years, so I was familiar with the Meisner family and their dog. This was the third time the dog had attacked me, but the first time it had bitten me. In the immediate aftermath of the bite, Marty and Carrie Meisner responded by berating and blaming me for the dog attack, minimizing the event and cussing us out as we prepared to seek medical attention. After this traumatic event, our family expected that there would be mechanisms in place within the animal control system and the city of West Des Moines to protect our family and others in the neighborhood. Unfortunately, that has not been the case. With the exception of our correspondence regarding this matter with council persons, Kevin Trevilian and Rene Hardman, we have been sorely disappointed and frankly outraged by the refusal of the city of West Des Moines to follow their own code regarding vicious animals. We have watched while animal control has given the Meisner family innumerable opportunities to get their dog under control, and the family has failed every time. After my bite, the Meisners violated the mandatory quarantine, made no effort to enclose their yard, and were not fined or held responsible for the attack in any way. Meanwhile, my mother's young grandchildren could not visit her home because we fear another dog attack. The Meisners have been aggressive toward me when I visited my mom, and the West Des Moines Police Department visits their home frequently in response to other disturbances. Their house is a problem house on Ninth Street. As a result of the Meisners' actions and lack of help from animal control, we have installed video cameras and a security system at my mother's home because we fear retaliation from the Meisner family. On July 11th, Assistant City Attorney Jessica Spoden sent us a letter stating that the dog would not be ruled vicious. However, West Des Moines City Code is clear regarding animal bites. We responded with a letter to Ms. Spoden, City Manager Tom Haddon, Chief of Police Chris Scott, and City Attorney Richard Szysinski, expressing our dismay that the city of Des Moines was choosing to disregard City Code Section 532, 537, and 538. We told these city leaders that we felt certain that another attack was likely and that their decision left our family more vulnerable and endangered the public at large, including postal workers, first responders, and residents, and that it surely left the city of West Des Moines open to further liability. Unfortunately, none of these city representatives responded to me regarding these concerns. On September 28th, 2019, less than four months after I was attacked, our security cameras caught the Meisner pit bull viciously attacking our neighborhood mail carrier. It recorded Carrie Meisner lying to the carrier and saying that "our, our dog isn't like that," and it recorded Marty Meisner trying to persuade the carrier that she wasn't really hurt. The attack of the mail carrier was 100% preventable, had West Pet Animal Control and the city of West Des Moines followed City Code and acted in the best interest of the citizens of West Des Moines. Currently, the U.S. Postal Service is denying all residents of Ninth Street their right to mail delivery due to the Meisners' inability to properly enclose their yard, lock their gate, secure their animal, and post vicious dog signage, as is required by code. The postmaster has stated that residents may not ever get their home delivery back and that they may have to walk to a collection box, which may cause them to walk past the Meisner property, by the way, in order to receive their mail. This is an unfair and unacceptable solution. And before you say that the city has no control over the postal service, you need to stop and use what power you do have as elected officials to advocate for the citizens of this community who feel unheard, unprotected, and unsafe. The entire neighborhood is being punished for the behavior of one family, and that is not right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Erin. Maybe, maybe before I ask anyone else on Ninth Street, I don't know, Dick, if you want to just quickly say what the, at least what you guys viewed the legal obligations were of the city and how it was resolved.
Well, the June bite, I spoke to your mother a fair amount of times. I didn't speak to you, Ms. Sears, but we do defer to the animal control department. They do have people that are on staff that made a determination. At that time, they didn't determine that the dog was vicious. They determined that it was provoked by the incident itself and the circumstances, so that's why it wasn't declared vicious the first time.
I have to disagree and say there was no provocation on the part of anyone.
You're gonna get your chance to, you're gonna get your chance to speak. Let's let him finish his explanation, and I'm happy to ask if anyone else wants to come up.
But I'd like to know what proofs they have that there's provocation.
I've never been interviewed by your, your officer, not by Jessica Spoden or yourself, only by Officer Vetter from the animal control.
There was an investigation undertaken, and as I said, we do defer to the animal control department. They made a determination, whether you believe it's to be true or not, their finding was that it was provoked. Okay.
Okay, you know what? If we're not gonna, if we're not gonna allow this to proceed as it needs to, then I'm not gonna take any more comments, and we'll set this up as an agenda item, and you all can come back, and we can deal with it at that time.
Hang on, hang on. So after the determination that it wasn't vicious, they, there was conditions that were imposed, and you're correct, that there was some violation at that time between the June incident. And then again, in September, there was an incident with the postal carrier in which time the dog attacked the postal carrier. We did another investigation. The animal control department determined that it was vicious. There were, rather than putting euthanizing the dog, they made a determination that they could impose conditions. There's $100,000 insurance policy that they have to have. They have to have it inside at all times. If it's out in the backyard, the fence has to be closed, the gate has to be closed, and there was an incident in which the gate wasn't closed, but the dog wasn't there at the time. It has to be muzzled and on a leash if it's ever out. It can't go to daycares, it can't go to city parks, it can't go to any gatherings where there's kids. So there are conditions that were imposed. The situation with the post office, unfortunately, is that because the postal carrier was attacked, they made a determination that they were gonna put a community mailbox up and make all the residents in the block go to the community mailbox. We've had numerous attempts to contact the post office. We have spoken to Laura Valle, she's the postmaster general, or the postmaster in West Des Moines. She's difficult to get a hold of, and I understand that she's at a meeting somewhere. I have spoke to Chris, spoken to Kristen Anderson, she's a spokesperson for the region, Minnesota, Iowa, North Dakota. She's indicated to us that they've made a determination that the community box is more adequate because they don't want to take the safety of their carriers and put that in jeopardy again. I informed her if even if the dog was removed, is it possible that we could get home delivery restored? They are meeting on that to make a determination, but she did tell me if the community box is installed, it was very unlikely that home service would be reinstituted. However, that community box hasn't been installed yet, so at this time, the post office is considering whether or not to restore house-to-house delivery. So I, I guess I can't really, you probably won't believe me, but I understand your frustrations, but we did follow through with protocol and went through the investigation, and unfortunately, this dog has bitten twice, and right now, as I said, there's these conditions have been imposed upon it.
We've, we've asked them if, if we have the dog removed, if they'll restore mail delivery to each home, and we're waiting for the final decision back. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it's a federal agency, and they're gonna make their decision, but at least we've suggested if we have the dog removed from West Des Moines, will you restore that? And we're waiting to hear for their decision.
But Steve, I think this comes down to more than just whether they get their mail service restored. I think, and I've, I've talked with Dick and Jessica about this, I think that the city aired when Ms. Sears was attacked. I do not understand how anybody can determine that when you're walking down your own driveway and a dog comes after you, how did you provoke it?
Thank you.
And to what extent was an investigation done? In talking with some of the neighbors in that area, you know, this is kind of an ongoing problem, so now we have a bite, and our animal control department determines, oh, it was provoked. So I think we made a huge mistake back in June. Now, a postal carrier was viciously attacked. This time, it was caught on camera, so I guess nobody could say that it was provoked. And now we take action on it, and to say that, okay, you gotta have $100,000 liability and this, that, and the other thing, but if that gate's not left closed all the time, which the neighbors tell me that it's not closed all the time, and now they're having to watch to see if it's closed or not, because we didn't have anybody checking on it, because I talked to Dick about that, which, again, I couldn't believe that we don't have animal control or officers, whatever, driving by periodically to see is the gate closed or not.
I must say, they are now, though, so.
Just a minute. And also, if there is to be a vicious animal sign posted, it's not there. So it, it appears to me that the Meisners are not following the law, and everybody else has to suffer for it. So I don't know what has to be done for us to go back in time to June and determine that the animal was vicious then, now fast forward, the dog goes away. I've also been told, I can't prove it because nobody's been able to give me the documentation, but I've been told that the dog was declared vicious in another city, and the son, who I guess owns the dog, was told by his parents, oh, bring it to our house. So they did. So now we inherited a vicious animal from another city. So if that's true, I guess that's strike three or four on the Meisners. So we, as a city, need to do something to get this dog out of there, because whether or not they, or their mail restored to their house delivery, I don't think it's right to keep the neighborhood and anybody else hostage from being able to walk up and down the streets.
Thank you.
All right, so this is, this is, no, just wait a minute. This is the first time that we've, we've, as an elected group, been dealing with this issue. Citizens Forum is not the time to have a full public hearing on this. So I guess what I'm gonna ask Tom and Dick, what's the appropriate way in which to actually have a public hearing on all these issues, so the residents can be heard, we can, we can find out what the facts are and make decisions, but it's just not appropriate under Citizens Forum to have this.
Can we do it under other matters at the end of the meeting?
You said you didn't want us talking about the same topics or repeating the same things. But he has elaborated on a lot of what I was gonna say, but I feel like as a neighborhood, we should overlook all of our concerns, and if you want to investigate it further and have us come back, we'll all check because it's that important.
All right, so we don't, we don't have that long of a, we don't have that long of an agenda tonight, so what I'm gonna suggest is we wait until other matters under item nine.
Just have one minute.
But that's gonna give us more time to discuss this if we wait and do it under other matters.
Well, I, me, I still say something overall to the matter. I don't have a dog. Some people do. We have, down that street, have many people that traffic that way with children that go to the park. And if you do not agree that that cannot become a real issue that bites you in the butt, I don't understand you.
Okay, what?
I don't care about me, but I care for all of our citizens that come down that way.
No, I, I get it. I told the city manager, I was confronted with a pit bull two weeks ago, walking into my own park.
I'm not willing to pay extra money because you don't do what you should be doing per hour City Code, okay? Thank you.
But we need your name and your address, if you would.
Can we get your name and address, ma'am?
My name is Maria Arthur, and I live at 508 Ninth Street.
Okay, thank you.
So how many other folks on Ninth Street would like to speak? Because if there's very many of you, we're gonna wait until other matters.
I just want, I'll be one minute.
Okay, but.
I'll put it over a couple other concerns that were mentioned as far as people in the area that would be affected.
Okay, all right, come on up and share your name and address, and I guess Dick and Tom, as you're listening to these comments, you let us know the best way to try to wrap this issue up, because this is the first time we, other than apparently Renee and Kevin, have been contacted by any of the residents about this issue. So in fairness to the rest of us, this is the first time we're hearing this.
I understand your frustration, but we're also frustrated as a neighborhood that we weren't notified by anybody that there was even a problem with the dog until we stopped receiving mail.
Okay, we need your name and address.
My name is Lindsay Murtha. I live at 539 Ninth Street, across the street from the house in question. Our level of frustration, which yours is also communication, is that nobody notified us that our mail was going to be suspended or that it was for the purpose that it was suspended because of. We had to go down and physically ask the post office, who then passed us multiple city officials to contact. They said their only concern was their mail carrier, to a point, I understand that. We're not concerned only because our mail might be rerouted to this communal box, which puts our safety in jeopardy by having to walk in the area, the fact that we won't be able to walk to the parks, play with our kids in the front yard. I have a 12-year-old who walks to and from Stillwell, who asked for mace because he's afraid to run into not only the dog across the street from me, but the amount of dogs that run loose in our area. It's an animal control issue and a homeowner slash dog owner issue with them not taking responsibility for securing their animals. That dog is not the only one that runs loose in our neighborhood, it's just the only one that's proven on more than one occasion to be dangerous. So I think there's a lot bigger of a problem as far as dogs running loose. My 12-year-old is terrified to walk to and from school. That's not right. We have people saying they're terrified to take their grandkids to the park. We have multiple bike lanes on Ninth Street and Vine. I have bikers going through my alley of Ninth Street to avoid the street on Ninth Street that they have a bike lane on to avoid that dog. So I feel like it's affecting many layers of the community, not just the people who live in the 500 block. Should that dog get loose, the postal service has banned 500 block of Ninth Street. What about the people on 10th Street, just on the other side of that alley? Or the people on the other side of Vine who are much closer to the house versus the people at 409th Street that are closer than locusts? At what point is that 500 block radius really effective? What is that doing if the concern is safety? Is that a reasonable area to secure? And those people who live in that area, we should be very concerned for our safety. The vicious animal, having to have signs listed, having it deemed vicious, that's gonna affect us as property owners if we go to rent or sell our house, we'll have to notify people of that. I was a full disclosure state, so we would be required to tell that information or risk keeping that secret and having something bad happen and have that on your conscience. It's not a decision I'm willing to have to make. So it's not up to us what happens with the dog. I just feel like we were failed on many levels as far as the codes go, that this dog shouldn't still be here, and it is affecting the community, not just the 500 block of Ninth Street.
No, I get it, and so our responsibility to deal with the dog, I don't know what we can do on the postal service since it's a federal agency.
And I understand that.
Except we reached out to them and said, would you restore your?
Right.
Mail delivery to each home if we get rid of the dog, and we're waiting to hear that decision.
And you're waiting on the response, okay.
But it sounds like regardless of what they do, we still have the issue on this dog.
Definitely. It's just a multi-layer of safety that we're concerned about, and it mainly boils down to kids or people who choose to be outside their house, enjoying their yard or the nearby parks or the bike lanes that we have, that the city has provided to us.
I get it, I understand.
And I do have, if you guys want a copy of what I was gonna say, a lot of people touched on it as well, so I won't repeat it, but I also went door-to-door this weekend and got a whole page of lists of names and addresses and support and concern on this matter, if that is something that would benefit you guys. I do have copies for all of you, if you'd like them.
Yeah, and Lindsay, why don't you give the one copy?
Absolutely.
We'll make it part of the record to Ryan.
Thank you for letting us all talk. It's just a lot of layers to this. So I appreciate it. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna do one more.
No, that's fine, let's see if there's anyone else. Anyone, I think you raised your hand, would you like, yeah?
I'm my husband, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna not touch on the same.
Hi, my name is Sean Murtha. I live at 539 Ninth Street. So I'm just gonna touch on a couple other things.
Okay.
In doing so, with everything that's been going on, me and my son, yesterday, decided to take care of the leaves in the yard, as any normal person would. The problem with that is, is you cannot turn your back to that house, because if you turn your back to that house and that dog gets out and you're not paying attention, me or my son can absolutely be attacked. Now, from what I have understood so far, it's been two ladies that have been attacked, which that makes me fear for my wife's safety when she's out in our front yard. I feel like every woman that is on the 500 block of Ninth Street should obviously take notice of what's been going on. On top of that, so today, I decided I would call Chain Link Fence Company to find out what's it gonna cost me to put a fence up in my front yard so we can be in our front yard without having to worry about being attacked. I was quoted for $22,365 for a four-foot fence to go around the front of my house. I think that that's a ridiculous thing that I should have to even think about doing at this point in time, but for the safety of my 12-year-old son, and it's something that I am gonna have to highly weigh that option, because it's not fair to my kid that he can't go out in the front yard and just do things that kids do. Kick a ball. You kick a ball, what does the dog wanna do? Dog's gonna wanna chase that ball. A kid runs, what's that dog gonna do? Dog's gonna chase him and probably try to bite him. So things like this are, just have me very, very frustrated that I feel like nothing's being done. I would feel better if they did anything like, our dog went through our, through our window going after a squirrel. We put in new windows. My dog went through the lattice on my, around my, my deck, so I replaced it with wood planks so my dog can't go through that. Now, my dog has never attacked anybody, but it is my job as a responsible dog owner to ensure the safety of my neighborhood. So I am doing that as I'm doing all this other stuff. I, I just think that where things are at right now, it's not, it's not fair to the safety of anybody walking through my neighborhood. That is my biggest concern, seeing all these kids walking home from school every day. You're talking about Hillside, kids from Head Start to sixth grade that are walking down that block. That is not fair. These kids probably don't even know what's going on, and I'm sure if the parents knew what was going on, they would not want their kids to walk home. So I am just, I am completely fearing for the safety of everybody in my neighborhood, and that's where I'm at right now. I'll stop there because everybody's pretty much touched on everything else I had to say, but I just, I, I think it's ridiculous that my whole entire neighborhood is being held accountable for one person. I think that if they truly wanted to make things better, we, we got training from Barkbusters for our dog. We own a pit bull, right? So train your dog then. Your dog's been trained to be a guard dog? Fine. You need to go get training from Barkbusters then to help break some of those habits so we don't have to fear, but I wanna see something done, whether it's by you guys or by them getting training. I'm not saying put the dog down, get rid of the dog, but I'm saying something has to be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Anyone? All right, anyone else on Ninth Street? Okay, so Dick and Tom, how do we get this issue resolved?
I think we'll gather more. If there's evidence that we weren't aware of or the animal control wasn't aware of at the time they made their declaration, then we need to reconsider that, so we'll, we'll gather information and contact you if necessary to get that information.
Great. I think it's impossible to have an investigation when you never contacted the bite victim. So you never contacted me. I'm the bite victim. I contacted other people. I corresponded with your office on July 11th. I was never once interviewed.
I believe your mother was, but I.
I am the dog bite victim. I am 40 years old.
I understand, I understand, so.
I am quite capable of explaining my own experience in the world.
The only people who were interviewed were my daughter and myself by the animal control officer. That was the only time.
Well, then, she was interviewed.
So no complete investigation can be done when you haven't actually spoken to me.
Well, I didn't.
And I am readily available, sir. Please let me know when you are.
I understand that. What I'm trying to say is we'll reinvestigate. I didn't do the investigation, but if animal control did speak to you, but we'll gather more information if we can reconsider this based on new information, then we'll have to do.
Yes, I would like you to reconsider, especially when you're saying that I provoked the dog. So thank you. I will await your contact, you contacting me, and if I do not hear from you, I will follow up myself. I've become quite accustomed to doing that.
Well, feel free to contact me if you'd like as well.
Sure will. Thank you.
So Dick, I know historically, we've, ultimately, sometimes it's ended up up here to make that decision, so remind us as elected officials what the role of the council is.
If the, if the determination made by the animal control is contested by the animal owner, then they can bring this to the council for further determination. They agreed when they determined it was, when animal control determined it was vicious, impose these requirements, one of which was the fence as well at six feet high and two feet under the ground. Obviously, they didn't contest that, so there was no need to appeal it to the city council for any further determination.
Okay, so how quickly can we at least bring this to a conclusion?
The next couple of days or so, we'll meet with you or get the information that we need and try and.
So by end of day Wednesday, we'll have some determinations made?
Well, I'm not.
I don't know why we can't. I mean, I'm just.
I'm saying this week.
I don't know why we can't get this done, though, in a matter of days. I mean, it's, you're talking about that many people to talk to. Ms. Sears, I'm sure she'll give everybody here her phone number, so.
I'm saying this week, we can, we'll make a determination, we'll get back together and, and let everybody know and, you know.
How many dog bites does it take to determine a dog vicious? According to Code, one.
Well, you know what? This is, this is Russ, this is Russ Trimble, and I'd like to walk in here. And I'm sorry I'm not there in person. This is a very serious issue, and we have a responsibility to protect the public. We had another situation with a dog years ago, and we tried to do that very thing, and people asked us to take a look at it, and it came all the way to the council where we had to vote whether or not to put the dog down. And I am an animal lover, as, as are people on the council, but it is our job to protect the public, and we did that in that case. And I can tell you right now, what, what came from that, first of all, it wasn't an easy decision, even though we did have to protect the public, because you're putting somebody's animal down. But at that point in time, you know, nobody, nobody stood by this council. We, I don't know how many emails we got saying we should be put down, that we're bad people for putting a dog down and everything else. I can't even tell you the harassment that we got for doing the right thing and trying to protect the people. We need to do that here, there's no doubt about that, and we will do that. I just hope that when we, when we take a look at this and make a determination, whatever that is, and if it happens to be that the dog is vicious and has to be put down or move or whatever the case is, that the people that are in that chamber right now stand behind this council.
Russ, I believe what you're talking about is the Lexi Group, if I, if the name's correct, out of New York that was contacting us, saying, how dare you put this dog down? It wasn't people from West Des Moines saying, how dare you? So it was a whole, whole different organization.
There was tons of people, Kevin. Tons of people.
All right, Dick, let's.
I, I'd like to get in as well, because my name was mentioned, and I did have conversation with you, and this is obviously an issue that means a lot to the people that are here today. And our role is to listen and to learn and then to lead and to make a decision. And our role is to listen and to learn and then to lead and then make a decision. When you and I visited, you sent pictures, you indicated that you were bit, and I said the process needs to work. This is the first that has really come to this. I did go to a Neighborhood Association meeting on Saturday, and at the first I heard, that Ninth Street now would not be getting mail, and there'll be some box put up and whatnot. And I think that's terribly inconvenient for neighbors. I think we all like our mail delivered close by and close proximity. So I do think we need to get to the facts. I think we need to get to the situation. There has been two bites. I am never one for euthanizing a pet. I just am not. I'm a pet owner. It is a hard thing to do, but I am for trying to make sure the citizens are safe and that their kids can play in the neighborhood, their kids can walk down the street, and not be fearful of someone coming out, or pit bull or dog otherwise coming out to bite. So I support that we need to get all that we need to make the best decision possible, because this is the first that the council is faced with having to make a decision. So we are on your side in terms of listening and gathering all the facts and making whatever the best decision is for the citizens of West Des Moines. So I appreciate you being here. This is the first time I've seen this room this full. A lot of you I know are for the dog and others are for another reason, but this is how city government works. It's the citizens that get to voice their concerns or issues. We need to listen and we need to lead, whatever that decision is. So count on that from me and count on that from my colleagues.
Thank you.
We'll conduct an investigation and have it finished by the end of the week, no later than the end of the week.
And then let's put an agenda item on the next council meeting, other matters in case that we need to discuss this as a part of this public process after you've completed your review again. And hopefully by that time, we will have heard from the postal people on whether or not they're willing to resume daily delivery to their homes.
And I might add, Mr. Mayor, we had no idea that they were gonna change the way mail was delivered. I mean, we were not notified either. I mean, we would've made you aware of that, but it was just kind of their decision.
Are there any other, other than the dog situation on Ninth Street, is there anyone else here that wants to address the council under Citizens Forum? Okay. We'll move on to Mayor, Council, City Manager, and other entity updates. We'll start with Item 3A, which is a proclamation and key to the city to Claudia Henning for all of her efforts on youth justice initiatives. So Claudia, if you'd join us up here, I got a couple things to read, and then I'll be happy to come down. Maybe we'll have you work on a dog ordinance for us.
I love dogs.
On how to resolve dog conflicts.
Yeah, dog justice.
Okay, a couple items. First, we have a proclamation and a key to the city to present to you.
What's it open?
A million dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it opens, but-
It looks pretty nice.
Yeah. Introductions. Claudia, many of yous don't need an introduction, but we wanted to share some background for the proclamation and the key. Claudia's dream was to engage the community and create an effective way to reduce youth crime. During the 1990s, juvenile crime had increased by 23%. Instead of the traditional punishment model, restorative justice engages the community in holding the youth accountable, addressing the needs of those harmed, and supporting youth to become a law-abiding citizen. Claudia has experienced the power of restorative justice with adult offenders and knew this process would be effective for youth. And I've talked to youths who've said it's actually changed their life, so. Twenty years ago, Claudia approached the West Des Moines Police Chief Jack O'Donnell with the idea of developing a restorative justice program for youth offenders. Chief O'Donnell agreed that it's just the right thing to do, and YJI was born in the fall of 1999. With the chief's blessing, YJI's powerful net of support was initiated, and it was organically evolved to be the only 0% recidivism division program in the 5th Judicial District. And it was recognized as an exemplary program by national and state law enforcement and educational organizations. So Claudia, with that, we have a key to the city that says, "Recognizing a restorative justice visionary who engaged the community creating the award-winning Youth Justice Initiative, healing injustice, offering hope, and creating peace." So thank you very much, and a key to your city.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation for Claudia. It says, "Whereas Claudia Henning has served as the Director of the Youth Justice Initiative since 1999, Claudia has worked tirelessly to forge strong relationship with police, school, city officials in the West Des Moines community. Claudia has held youth and their families accountable while addressing their needs with compassion and optimism. Claudia has, through her tenacity, a tenacious spirit, and inspired and united our community to go above and beyond in serving youth and their families. Whereas the mayor and the city council of West Des Moines wish to express their appreciation to Claudia for exemplary leadership as a public servant and her continued effort to improve the lives and well-being of youth and families who participate in the West Des Moines Youth Justice Initiative. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on this fourth day of November 2019, the city council staff, citizens of the city of West Des Moines hereby recognize and honor Claudia for her accomplishments and dedication to public service." So you're welcome. Yes, yes, we're welcome.
Oh, I'm so proud of our city. I'm so proud of our city that, you know, the people that are here tonight to talk about dogs, and we listen, we listen, and we leave. So thank you so much to the council and to the mayors over the years, and Dick Shazinski, my good friend. So, and thank you to the community, because truly, oh my gosh, the people that I'm seeing here tonight that have touched others and that have touched me, it truly is a community justice program that we have created here, we together, together, not me, not the city council, not the mayor, it's that we. And Jennifer, come on here. We have a foundation, and we- Where's the rest of the team? Ashley, Landon, get over here. Connie, Dylan, get up here. Put that down. Lamar, Jager. My man. So the team is strong. We've been going at this for some years. Where's Scarlett? She's the one who wrote today. Scarlett, up here. And Carla Hardy, is she here? Is she over? Putting the flowers on the table. So, we're having a party afterward. Dogs are not invited. I'm not saying you're welcome to come to the party. But we want to have you come to the party at the Embassy Club, and it's a community justice program. It's happened since we began. And you know, we never, we thought we were- Hi. Hey, we're in here, we're here. The universe showed us the way forward. We had some ideas, but we really didn't know. But together, you know, we discovered what the next step forward was, and it's been a wonderful and miraculous journey. We've been touched by so many of you, and we're so glad that you came here tonight. And come party on.
Thank you. Thank you. You can, yeah, go to your party.
Have a party.
You've got a party to go to.
We have a party.
Yeah.
See you at the party.
I'm so thrilled with the work you've done. It's awesome.
Thanks, Claudia.
Yeah, we got it.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm good.
You're notorious.
Yes.
That's good luck.
Thank you. I really don't want to see any animal. It's given a lot. Occupying a lot of space. Apparently, I know what she's gonna do when she grows up.
Our mics aren't working.
Hey, how are ya? Here to meet you?
Okay.
Yeah. I went to the library today, and I got a whole tour of what we're doing and all that, if you want to.
Dick needs to go out and take this conversation down. Let him. Dick. Dick. Why don't you go finish your conversation out there, please? Is there class on self-awareness? Alright, thanks. Alright, we're gonna, yeah, let's continue with this council reports. Jim, do you have a council report?
Not this time, Your Honor.
Kevin?
The only thing I want to say is that back on October 24th, I had the privilege along with the mayor and city manager and several city staff to attend the groundbreaking for the light VJ display down in Valley Junction. What this is, it's gonna be a lighting display that's gonna be down, starting in Railroad Park, and it's gonna extend for three, two more phases, all up and down the 5th Street corridor, the buildings, the walkways, and whatnot. And I want to invite everybody that's watching online, and those few that are left in the council chambers now, that November 21st at 5:30, in conjunction with the first jingle in the junction, we're gonna flip the switch and actually turn this light display on. So, it's an event that you're gonna want to be a part of. Thank you.
Russ, any council report?
No, none at this time, Your Honor.
Alright, John?
None at this time, Your Honor.
Renee?
I'll just be brief here. I just want to say, speaking of the junction, you know, there's an organization called The Taste of the Junction, and I'm really proud of that group. I really think they do what they can to preserve the junction and the history of the junction, and they're gonna continue to do as much as they can to make sure that people are aware of all the happenings in the history, in the rich history in the junction. And they did a service project on Saturday, right here in West Des Moines at Meals of Artland, and I was very pleased to take part of that, and they're gonna continue to do service projects. So I applaud Rachel Long and her family for putting forth a number of initiatives to keep the Taste of the Junction alive and well in the community.
No report, Your Honor.
I guess I'll just mention, I joined Chief Scott a week ago Friday, and Renee and Russ, and we swore in six new police officers that have joined the force, so we keep adding to that group. We've got a big community and a lot of folks coming in and out of town, so we appreciate all the great officers that we're attracting to the city of West Des Moines, so it's a credit to Chief Scott and his organization.
Mayor, if I could just add really quickly, Russ Trimble and myself also were there and stayed and watched a young boy scout who wants to be an Eagle Scout, who dedicated a memorial outside of the police department. It was his project, and Jim, pardon, pardon me?
Don't want the fire?
No, no, the police department. And it was beautiful. It was an unveiling of that. This young boy scout designed it, raised money for it, and they revealed it that day. And I think Russ Trimble can say also, we were just moved and touched by what one young person, one young mind can do, and it was just one of the most beautiful ceremonies that I've seen in a long time. Wouldn't you say, Councilman Trimble?
I'd echo that. Yep, it was Jimmy Clark, and he's a senior at Dowling, and he could not have done us more proud. I mean, just the work, like you said, that he put into this, the ceremony that he put on, and just how this monument honors our fallen officers, it was extremely moving and touching, and I will never forget it, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you for bringing that up, Renee.
You're welcome.
Item four is a consent agenda. Ryan mentioned that 4G, the resolution was changed based on the new location, but with that exception, are there any items that any council member wants to pull? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for approving all of them.
Second.
Alright, please vote. We'll need to re-sign in.
Jim came in.
Here. Renee, we need you to re-sign in.
I don't know, I didn't even pay attention.
Four present in the chambers and one on the phone.
Two or three minutes, I'm not over that. I don't think it was-
Second.
Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. Item five, old business, there are no items tonight. Item six, public hearings. Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider midtown redevelopment east side of 8th Street, 1221 to 1261. Establish a planned unit development to allow development of a vertical, commercial, and residential mixed-use development initiated by Jarcore LLC. This was continued from the October 21st City Council agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
October 4th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Received any written comments?
The Planted Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the PUD ordinance.
Right now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6A. Alright, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's an ordinance for the first reading, there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration for first reading.
For a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote. Alright.
Five yes. Nordest Amendment, official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter 9, Planted Development District pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. Item 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider private development initiated by Riken LLC, Martin's Flag Company LLC, and Quill &amp; Nib LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
October 25th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Alright, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6B. Alright, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the agreement, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. Item seven, new business, 7A, Shields Warehouse, 175 South 9th Street, Building 300. Approval of a site plan to construct a 30,000-square-foot warehouse. Shields All Sports Inc., it's a resolution to approve the site plan and approval and acceptance of the sanitary sewer easement, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. Item seven, new business, 7A, Shields Warehouse, 175 South 9th Street, Building 300. Approval of a site plan to construct a 30,000-square-foot warehouse. Shields All Sports Inc., it's a resolution to approve the site plan and approval and acceptance of the sanitary sewer easement, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. 7B, Jordan Creek Urban Renewal Area. Terminate the urban renewal area and repeal ordinance numbers 1414, 1559, 2203, and 2313. City initiated the first item as a resolution to approve the termination of the urban renewal area, and there are no issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. 7B, Jordan Creek Urban Renewal Area. Terminate the urban renewal area and repeal ordinance numbers 1414, 1559, 2203, and 2313. City initiated the first item as a resolution to approve the termination of the urban renewal area, and there are no issues.
Move approval.
For a second?
Second.
Questions on terminating the urban renewal area? Alright, please vote. Alright. Five yes. Second item is an ordinance for the first reading, there are no issues.
Move consideration for first-
And as it says in this communication, it's been used as an example of really how TIF is ideally situated. I know I've been asked by the city of Omaha to provide information on this, so I know there's other cities around that are actually looking to see how tax-incentive financing can help with economic development, and this continues to be the best example that people are asking for. So we can go back in history, and we can talk about a lot of the gas and stuff when we decided to do this, but this has been so successful for our community. So kudos to everybody that's been involved in this from day one up until this point where we can actually terminate it because it's accomplished its useful life. We just need a few more of them. All right, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
7C, excess property related to the Grand Prairie Parkway Improvements Project. Three plats of survey to create three parcels for transfer of ownership. City initiated, this is a resolution to approve and release the three plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
7C, excess property related to the Grand Prairie Parkway Improvements Project. Three plats of survey to create three parcels for transfer of ownership. City initiated, this is a resolution to approve and release the three plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Questions or comments?
Second.
Questions on terminating the urban renewal area? All right, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
Second item is an ordinance for the first reading, there are no issues.
Move consideration for the first reading?
Second.
Questions or comments? I guess the one comment I would make is, and this, you know, we should help Russ with the folks at the Capitol, this TIF district generated $688 million of value. And as it says in this communication, it's been used as an example of really how TIF is ideally situated. I know I've been asked by the city of Omaha to provide information on this, so I know there's other cities around that are actually looking to see how tax-incentive financing can help with economic development, and this continues to be the best example that people are asking for. So we can go back in history, and we can talk about a lot of the gas and stuff when we decided to do this, but this has been so successful for our community. So kudos to everybody that's been involved in this from day one up until this point where we can actually terminate it because it's accomplished its useful life. We just need a few more of them. All right, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
7C, excess property related to the Grand Prairie Parkway Improvements Project. Three plats of survey to create three parcels for transfer of ownership. City initiated, this is a resolution to approve and release the three plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
7C, excess property related to the Grand Prairie Parkway Improvements Project. Three plats of survey to create three parcels for transfer of ownership. City initiated, this is a resolution to approve and release the three plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
7C, excess property related to the Grand Prairie Parkway Improvements Project. Three plats of survey to create three parcels for transfer of ownership. City initiated, this is a resolution to approve and release the three plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
All right.
Five yes.
All right, we have no Item 8, no items to see file and to refer. Item 9, other matters. Are there any other matters that any council member wants to raise tonight?
I don't have any issues, but I would like to acknowledge someone.
Yeah.
I would like to acknowledge my friend, Mr. Bob Parks, former city councilman. It's been a long time since we've seen you here in the chambers, and it's an honor to be in your presence, and thank you for your service, and it's just phenomenal to see you.
And you haven't aged one day, Bob, since we saw you last, so you're living the good life.
So Bob, you are 16 years in the council, right? So I'm about in my 16th year, and I know how you feel, brother. I'm right there with you.
He's been smiling more.
Yeah, Bob, so thanks for joining us. It's always great to see you, and like I said, you've worked on a few tough issues in your day, I remember.
Oh, yeah.
I, yeah, this is, as you probably know, probably my first, quite embarrassing. I'd like to see you guys working hard, except for special moments of the year. I don't think anyone expected you to develop as quickly as it did. To this day, it was... I want to also thank all of you for the hard work you're doing. I call it hard work. I know what I am. I'd like to thank all of you for that effort.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
You too, Bob.
All right, no workshop, no executive sessions, so adjourn.